I was the clicker.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good on you.
Great, so we will call the meeting to order for seven P M. And at this time, we do have one addition, which is a request, a request for a letter support coming forward from the, or no, I guess it would be a request letter coming forward from the Curling Club and blah blah. Are there any other things this evening? I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
So.
We have a second turn?
All set.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
That is.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved with the one addition. We do have a gallery presentation this evening, so we have Terry Smith from Destination Cape Breton Association with us. And also our town representative on the board, Paula Davis. So I'm sure you'll just be your support. Not participating, but. So over to you, Terry. Thank you so much for coming today.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me back here.
Absolutely.
So I'm here mainly to speak about two issues. Well, one, one main issue, but the C B R M decision regarding the marketing levy. But I, I thought while I'm here, I'll give you an update on, on everything else that's been going on as well. So. We'll start with the C B R M. So on June tenth, the C B R M council made a decision to keep fifty percent of the marketing levy funds that they collect within their jurisdiction to start their own events initiative. This was a decision that we weren't in agreement with. We looked at, were there options to, you know, what was this assembly, but at the end of the day, the council had made the decision and we have to live with it and move forward. In terms of the impact on us, basically for, for this year, budget wise, it results in three hundred and twelve thousand dollar cut from our budget. Most of that will be the removal of major events activities. So they're taking away marketing funds, but they're also taking away a responsibility that we had as well. So that's where most of the three hundred and twelve thousand adjustment came from, about two hundred and thirty thousand. For the rest of eighty two thousand, we reduced some operational expenses and also made some reductions in more income, non-core marketing and destination development areas. So nice to do things, but not need to do things. So the, the things that are our main focus areas, we're going to continue to do that. One thing that you should know is that the board directed us with this decision. They said that the decision of one municipality should not impact the tourism industry in the other four municipalities. And so we're, we're standing by the direction and making decisions accordingly on those cuts. It really, when it comes down to it from a marketing, marketing, the destination development areas, it's only about forty thousand dollars in cuts. So, so it's, it's not huge in terms of those, those cuts anyway. And the thing to note though is that C B R M is still projected to be our second largest contributor of marketing levy funds this year. So they're still fairly significant in the big picture. Like I said, we didn't agree with it, but we're living with it. We've adjusted and moving forward. So one of the things happening this year, so marketing wise, our summer campaign wrapped up. We're heavy into fall. We're actually planning winter right now. We're almost always two seasons ahead. It makes my life go really quick, but that's the way it is. We've developed a new creative campaign. So we hired a marketing agency last year for the first time that we didn't do that, that function in-house, but it's really going to be working out. They've come up with an amazing campaign. It's focused on taking your time. And so we did some research a couple of years ago that showed that the biggest impact that, that we could have from an economic impact standpoint within our tourism industry is if we can get our visitors to stay one day longer, that means they explore more of the island and, and spend more money per visitor. So that's what this whole campaign is going to be focused on, lengthening the, the stay of those folks. But it's also going to be using humor. So this is the first time we all, we've taken this approach. So we're actually, we're working with actors to, to do this. And what we've seen so far, I think it's really going to be a winter force and set us apart from other destinations. We have some brand research that is in market right now to be delivered soon, marketing plan and development, content marketing. We had a number of influencers visit us. A couple from Calgary this year, one from Ontario, and they were going all over the island. We're also collaborating a lot with our local content creators, more and more. Actually, there's just one Jamie Walker who lives here in Port Hoxbury that has just done, done a video for us focused on Port Hoxbury. So we're, we're trying to get more video content and all those other things that these folks, there's Davia Sky, two of the most popular on the island, they're at Miller's. We also this summer launched a new website and it's a faster site, more user and A I friendly. And it also has robust community sections. So it just give you a taste of Port Hoxbury section, but this is a sample of what, not sample, this is what the, the page looks like, like right now. These are just starting points. So if you see anything that you need, you think needs to be changed, just let us know and we'll update that, but we'll be developing these as we go forward. As you go further down the page, you see listings of different things that there are to do in the community. Everything from outdoor adventure, arts culture, events, places to eat and places to stay. And the other thing is that a visitor, when they come to our website, they'll be able to pick what season they want to look at depending upon what time they want to visit. And all of the listings will change depending upon what's available, what's open in, in that particular season. So I encourage you to take a look at that when you get a chance, visit cape breton dot com. From a destination development standpoint, there's a lot of work being done. We have a sustainable tourism plan that we've been working on for the past year that will be rolled out within the next few weeks. We partnered with Tyans. That's the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia. They got some funding from the province to do what's called an H R advisor pilot program. So they asked us and Yarmouth to, to be the pilot areas for that program. Through that program, it didn't really cost us anything, but training was provided to three hundred and thirty-two industry members right across the island. So, so we're hoping that that's going to be picked up and continued going forward. We're working with our V I C counselors. We're, we're looking at the potential to utilize them in the off-season when they're not in the V I Cs to, to help us with travel planning for visitors. That's another way we think we can use their expertise to convince visitors to stay a bit longer. And we have an accommodation needs assessment for the island that's being conducted. That should be in our hands within a few weeks. Marine tourism, there's a Nova Scotia boating collective that we were part of pushing with partners across the province and they're up and running. And A T D tourism assessment is an initiative that we're going to be starting this fall. And that would include, we're going to be focusing on the southern part of the island. So everywhere from really here to straight right through to maybe Lewinburg. So that kind of falls southern end. Some results for year to date. So the vast majority of our webs, our, our marketing draws people to our website. Last year, we had a record number of visits to our site. This year, we're going to blow past that. Sessions are up twenty-six percent year, year to date. We also measured clicks from our website out to tourism operators because that tells us that people are serious about making their plans. They're also up thirteen percent at a record rate. However, I want to point out since we launched our new website, those clicks to operators are actually up thirty-two percent. So the new website is actually creating more, more, more conversion, I would say, from, from people who visit the site going out to operators. Our markets, everybody's up. So maritimes is up the most. We've done a little bit more in the maritime, in the regional market, especially for winter and our shoulder seasons. So that's where that, that change comes from. But Alberta, Ontario, Quebec, all up. Room nights sold. We only have this data to the end of May from the province so far. To the end of May, it was down six percent. A big portion of that comes from March, where you can see there's a four thousand room night decline. Most of that was because in twenty twenty-four, the island hosted the World Women's Curling Championship and didn't have an event of that scale this year. So that was the difference. But we're going to see that decline turnaround when it comes to June, July and August. And an indicator of that is short-term rentals, which we do have to the end of August. And they were on a similar track to the end of May. Short-term rentals were down about three percent. But now they're up four percent year to date. But the summer in, in July and August, it was up six and a half percent. The other thing with short-term rental units is that revenues were also up seventy percent. So very strong numbers for that. And Burke's Gate of Sites, we also monitored these. They were free for the summer for Fortress of Lewisburg and Alexander Graham Bell. So you can't really judge the whole industry by that, but up twenty-eight percent and thirty-one percent respectively. Cape Breton Highlands National Park camping was up about ten percent. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Terry, for your, for your great presentation. I'll go along and up the floor for some questions. So we'll start with councillor.
I don't really have any questions, but I appreciate the, the presentation. I'm just wondering if forecast, do you see any decline with the fire vans and stuff, maybe?
Yeah, so we, we were always in communication with operators around the island, but for the most part, there were cancellations, but not significantly. Now, that being said, there were a few businesses that, you know, really focused on it being in the woods as part of their business and they were, they were forcing it, really affected disproportionately. And one, one of those businesses, for example, I think they live here most of the time. Kathy and Dirk Taylor, T N T Adventures, they were certainly impacted by that. And so we've, we've been advocating for some support for those, those businesses that have been disproportionately affected by the woods.
And councillor.
You said the website changed. When, when was that?
Mid-July.
Mid-July. And just kind of content or just what was?
A whole new site, home site, whole new architecture for the site. The other one was about five, five and a half years old. So usually that's where the shelf life, so, so being invested in one.
And you were saying about adding an extra day, like what would the average stay be?
So the most recent data we had is four point four days. So most people are going to take two of those days and do the cabin trail or maybe even a little bit more than two days. But so, you know, if we can get it to five point four, this study that we had a couple of years ago would say that that would translate into a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of additional economic impact on the island. So that's going to be focused.
That's great. And councillor.
Thank you, your worship. So hearing you say the C B R M has cut back fifty percent or is retaining fifty percent of the marketing levy, right? So what they are contributing is three hundred and twelve thousand.
Well, not, not totally. For that, that's because it was done partway through the year. So it would be, we budgeted about nine hundred thousand from them for this year.
Okay.
So they would can, they would keep, if, if it had been the full fiscal year, be four hundred and fifty thousand, but it was partway through the year already. So it's three hundred and twelve.
And thank you. And then when you say you've had to remove major events activities because of that.
Yes.
What sort of, which major event?
Well, just, so for example, we had a position, a salesperson dedicated to major events that, that that person actually found another, another job. So, but she wasn't replaced. So there's a position eliminated. Plus the, but what was budgeted in terms of attracting events. So that's, that's activities that we won't be doing.
I'm curious about feedback from visitors to the island. Many years ago, probably thirty, might have been even longer than thirty, there used to be summer students hired at the causeway and they would stop, they would stop vehicles before they got to the bridge and they would go through a very quick questionnaire just asking what their likes were, what their disappointments were and that sort of thing. Do we get, do we do any sort of online survey? Do we get feedback from visitors along that same extent, but in kind of digital form now?
Yeah, so we're doing it differently.
Yes.
But it's, it's, so we're doing it in partnership with the province. So there's, there's a program called Voice of the Visitor that we do get some of that, that feedback.
And so we're in the kind of monopolized, and what? I'm sure there's lots of positive comments, but what would be some examples of negative comments? Because I guess what I'm curious about, you're talking about, you know, the importance of trying to extend stays by at least a day. So if people are having negative experiences for whatever reason, that's, that's shorting their stay. So is there any examples that you can give about?
Sure. If I can give you, this is preliminary, but I mentioned that we have a brand study. So with that brand study, we did basically online focus groups with people that have visited. And one of the common things that I was noted from some people was they expected the quality to be higher. So I think that's something that's going to have to be addressed.
Right, right. Can you just speak to the H R advisor pilot program in terms of what, what training and who is the training intended for?
Oh yeah, all, all the training is training that is provided for by the Tourism Industry Association. And so we're, we're basically playing a role. We contracted somebody for the position who basically would reach out to tourism operators and make them aware of what was available, but ask, also ask them what their needs were. And so from that, you know, they would, they would find out about different training options from their staff. So it was everything from customer service to mixology, learning how to make drinks, and, you know, a number of other areas as well.
One thing that it's been ongoing, I think for a number of years now, is the shortened time that the visitor information center is open. I'm not sure what the closing hour is. You probably know what the closing hour is for.
I think it's four thirty or something like that.
Years ago, it was close to eight o'clock in the, and so it's very frequently that you see RVs and cars in the parking lot, people getting out, walking up to the door, and there's nobody there to greet them.
Yeah.
So that's, must be a just a cost issue with the province or what's?
Well, the province, I think, is, is, is not putting as much value on visitor information centers as they used to. So they used to, for, for example, we used to run a program for visitor information centers around Cape Breton Island that provided a lot more training and support and, and, you know, staffing assistance and things like that. That was stopped probably in twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, something like that. And so it, it's, it's something that we've tried to get them to, like, think about the importance of these centers, you know, particularly, a big part of our visitors are people that are coming that are fifty-five plus. And those are the folks that are looking for information in terms of, you know, physical brochures and maps and things like that. And that's where visitor information centers play a role. So, so it's, it's something that we've, we've talked to them about, but it, it's, I, I think it's, they cut the costs ten years ago and they're not going back.
It was so incongruent because it's the top destination, right? And yet we're, we're not providing that service for the people who come across the causeway. One of the things that's been done away with a number of years ago was the Tourist and Dreamers Guide, which was kind of known as the Bible for tourists, right?
Yeah.
You had it at your hands and they cut that because of cost and it's all digital. But there's a lot of people again that would rather have something physical in their hands rather than looking on a computer. Anyhow.
We still do a physical experience guide and, and maps. And, and a lot of the community visitor information centers around the island do stay open later hours as well. So it's something, but that was the problem. Let's put it that way.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Derek. I guess, what's the one thing you would recommend or advise us as municipal council here? Apart from tinkering with the marketing levy, that we could do tangibly to focus on? To work on whether there's an initiative or buy dollar policy or whatever that would support the overall aims of Destination Cape Breton where we could thereby benefit and then our neighbors could benefit and be part of this tourism industry. What's the one thing that you'd say we should be focusing on as?
Yeah, so I mean, Port Hoxbury is an important hub, not just for the island, the whole straight area. And, and I think creating reasons for people to want to stay longer is the biggest thing. So for example, you know, I'm familiar with the waterfront velvet plants, which look fantastic and I hope someday that that can come to fruition. But it could be looking at new attractions, things like that. Events are great. Once you have a new hotel, I think there's going to be more of an opportunity to bring events here as well. But it's, it's really, you, you've got, because you've got services, people are going to stop. But you want them to stay. If you can get them to stay for a couple of hours, that means they're spending more money here. There's more economic impact for Port Hoxbury. If you can get them to stay overnight, give them enough things to do to stay overnight, that's, that's a huge help as well. So it's creating valid reasons for them to want to spend time.
Thanks, thanks councillor. Your great questions and I think one competitive advantage that Port Hoxbury has also is the fact that we are two-four-seven community, like most of our businesses are open around. So, you know, as we explore getting people to stay longer in the winter months and, you know, even later into the fall, there's definitely, I think it's given a little bit of. But thank you so much.
There's a can-do spirit here that definitely exists in every community. And I think that's something to cherish.
We can try to ride that wave, Terry. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate you taking the time and for answering all the questions.
Thank you. See you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the council reports on assigned communities. So we'll go around the other ways. We'll start with Deputy Merrill Lightning.
Yes. It's been a long time since I gave the report, so I'd say, but it was during a quiet time during the summer. On the twenty fifth of June, attended the Stray Superport Corporation event in Dundee and there were some water utility business connected there. It was a good networking event. On July first, with councillor Barrett, talked talks with the Rotary Club for candidate celebrations. On July seventh, the, met with the group Port Hoxbury with new owners of a overnight establishment here in the boardroom. Along with town staff and district planning commission staff attended that meeting on the eighth, July eighth, met with new owners of a firm, Port Hoxbury, so a ship repair, and they're now V C's of ours. On the twenty first, July twenty first, was through the C L C was working for Everwinds, was working with the communications person, Clara Parsons on the christening of their tugs. On July twenty first, had a first discussion with a representative from Spitzer, who was a tug operator in the port headquartered in Copenhagen. And they're now have office space and warehousing space on the waterfront registered from us. On the thirtieth, I met with councillor Barrett and various members of staff and economic development officer, Rochelle Sampson, to find out the specific needs of that company, Spitzer. At fifteen hundred and a half, July three, that same day, sixteen thirty, met with the developer, grow Port Hoxbury staff in the boardroom upstairs. On the July thirty first, attended a water utility meeting. On Friday, the August first, attended virtually an emergency meeting at council. On Tuesday, August fifth, fourteen thirty, another Landry Lake Water Utility Meeting. On Wednesday, August sixth, eleven in the morning, follow-up discussion from that meeting. Eighteen hundred and that same day, Grow Port Hoxbury meeting in the boardroom. On Friday, August eighth, after meeting Commodore, the yacht club, the new Commodore at Sovies, he asked if I could meet him at the yacht club and admit to the executives, the new executive, which I'll share the, my meeting notes with the developer Hoxbury members, the first opportunity they're available. Their comprehensive notes, they're valuable, find them interesting. On Tuesday, August twelfth, traveled to Halifax and met at the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board. And later that same afternoon at a legal firm on the same subject matter. And on that trip, we had two staff members come to meet. So the savings on the travel, right?
Yeah.
That's good. But we encountered in Milford, a rollover written from us and C A O from Richmond County and water expert Jason were on the scene rendering assistance. So that was a nice to see that. It was, yep. And a cheap trip too. On Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, fourteen thirty, Landry Lake Water Utility Meeting, that was virtual. Thursday, August fourteenth, at fourteen hundred, there was another Water Utility Meeting. August eighteenth, in-person meeting again with the straight council executive and councillor Barrett, Rochelle Sampson was there as well. August twentieth, a lunch meeting at Miller's with the C E O, straight council support and straight of council yacht club commander, and Paul popped in that time, we said hello. Yeah. On August twenty first, fifteen hundred in-person Landry Lake Water Utility Meeting. And at noon hour that day, there was attended the christening with other members of the Everwind tugs, with the federal minister there as well. September second, at eighteen hundred, public meeting of council. September third, at fourteen hundred, we met with an industry representative in Point, from Point Pepper. At fifteen thirty, there was a second meeting. Councillor Barrett was there and Mr. Doyle. Eighteen hundred that day, there was a grow Port Hoxbury meeting I attended late, I showed up around eight forty, eighteen forty-five. Monday, September eighth, at fourteen hundred, regional airport meeting. And that's most of the activity for the summer.
Thank you very much for the report.
Yeah.
It's your job now to show up here. It's your job now to show up here.
No, no, I'm not showing up. I'm not showing up to Deputy Mayor. Uh, so uh, so the on the Thursday, July twenty-fourth, we we had a straight area transit to board meeting. On the twenty-sixth of August, we had a straight area transit board meeting, which was also our annual general meeting. I had, I've been fortunate enough to kind of service the chair since uh, twenty twenty. So this is three years now. And um, uh, so we were, we had an election of officers that was nominated to be chair of the, and I declined because I've been there three years and I thought somebody else should be taking over. So our current chairperson is uh, Councilor McLennan from Mycogma. Our deputy chair is Claudia Klein from Shetty Camp, and our secretary treasurer is Amanda Mumberg. Um, we uh, like uh, Port Hoxbury, their community development, we didn't meet through July and August, but we did have a meeting on September third. And we were fleshing out some ideas that we had kind of workshopped back in June as to things that we can try to start to focus on. And try to identify some priorities um, for us to work on going through this fall. So that's my, uh, we, well, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on to you, Council Barrett.
Okay, uh, June twenty-first, I attended the Eastern Zone Healthcare Update from Nova Scotia Health that was uh, here at the Civic Center. Uh, June twenty-fourth, the attendant MCM cultural awareness training that was held here. Uh, June twenty-fifth, attended the Everwind Project Update. Uh, June twenty-sixth, uh, attended Superport Days in Dundee. July third, uh, attended Cape Breton South Recruiting for Healthcare Committee Meeting. July seventh, met with the new owners of the Maritime Inn. Uh, July eighth, uh, chaired the uh, Grow Port Hoxbury Committee. Um, July thirtieth, met with company looking to operate in the town, Spitzer, which are currently now have a have a office there. And uh, met with another developer just to discuss the challenges and opportunities. Uh, um, August first, attended Emergency Council Meeting. Uh, August fifth, uh, we had a Landry Lake Water Utility Board Meeting. August eighth, met with the uh, with the Director of Planning and Development from another municipality, just to discuss ideas, uh, uh, different ideas. August uh, twelfth, also chaired a Grow Port Hoxbury Committee Meeting. August fourteenth, uh, attended NSFM Policing Review that was held in Halifax. And while I was there, also met virtually with the At Home Housing Association Steering Committee. Um, August nineteenth, Sports Wall of Fame Committee. August twenty-first, uh, Landry Lake Water Utility Board Meeting. As well as attended the Everwind tugboat christening. August twenty-second, attended the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Healthcare Physicians Reception. Uh, August twenty-seventh, uh, met with the nonprofit housing uh, organization about opportunities for the town. September third, uh, I chaired the Grow Port Hoxbury Committee. September ninth, uh, Atlantic Hydrogen Alliance Webinar, I uh, I uh, took that in. As well as uh, the Police Advisory Board Meeting in Mulberry, same day. And September eleventh, uh, attended the At Home Housing Associate, Association Steering Committee.
Thank you.
Summer's over.
Summer's, summer's definitely over. Uh, Council heard.
I uh, want to apologize for not having my marine standardized times. I have to change my clock to figure it out. Um, June twenty-second, we attended, or I attended a barbecue to celebrate the start of summer with fellow staff, which was, yeah, celebratory. Nice to see everybody around. June twenty-fifth was uh, Friends United for um, Everwind Briefing and Workshop. June twenty-sixth, um, uh, that was just a kind of a personal day. I was allowed to participate in planting flowers with the girls, the staff. And July fourth was dinner with the Blue Nose uh, facility by Council Corey, I believe. And uh, July twenty-fourth was a SAT meeting, August first, an emergency meeting. August twenty-first, the Everwind Tug Ceremony. September two, council meetings, September three, community development, development, party meeting. Um, where we collectively asked out uh, opportunities that arise from some of our previous meetings. And September ninth, the Police Advisory Meeting. And that concludes my.
Thank you. Thank you. So um, lovely mind will be fairly brief since I don't need to be super redundant. Um, some of the council have reported on Superport Days, which I also attended. The Everwind Event of Friends United, which I attended, the Blue Nose Dinner, um, the cultural awareness training. Um, in addition, I also intended uh, several NSFM and uh, AMA meetings, which I am a member of both of those doors. Uh, both executive and full committee uh, meetings. Um, my next one scheduled for tomorrow evening. Uh, so of course, growing for Hoxbury continued to meet throughout the summer. Uh, the last meeting that we had, uh, Council Barrett mentioned, September third. Um, also lots of meetings throughout the summer uh, regarding Landry Lake Water Utility, which uh, Deputy Mary Langley has uh, noted throughout the summer. Um, the idea committee uh, did recess for the summer, but we're currently working on a date uh, to schedule the meeting, just to pick things back up. So we can uh, roll out our our new idea committee uh, plan uh, that uh, council has approved. And the straight council offshore wind task force uh, have changed their monthly meetings to every two months. Um, so we do have a meeting uh, that will be coming up shortly. Uh, and um, on July twenty-ninth, uh, we did have a clean leadership program uh, meeting with Ministers Holman and Thompson, which was a really great meeting. Um, also various meetings uh, with developers, as noted uh, by Council, uh, Deputy Mary Langley and Councilor Barrett. Um, various meetings also uh, with Nova Scotia Public Works. And of course, the tug christening, which was also mentioned, uh, I think, believe it was August twenty-first, uh, down at the Port Hoxbury here. Um, uh, also, uh, we had meetings throughout the summer uh, regarding uh, the Austin Ledger Project, uh, which we will outline a little later on in the agenda. Uh, August twenty-seventh, they attended a P D F meeting, um, airport meeting uh, that Deputy Mary Langley mentioned was on September eighth. Uh, and just in upcoming uh, for council's benefit, uh, the volunteer award ceremony. Um, that I will be attending, accompanying our partner home through the year, any beaten, uh, will be taking place on September twenty-one. So I definitely look forward to that. Um, our Everwind C L C meeting is tomorrow. Uh, Eastern District Planning uh, Commission Meeting is September twenty-fifth. And our next task force meeting is on September twenty-fifth. Any other committee updates?
Uh, you worship me, I said, just another mini update, but I just wanted to follow up on um, reference that Deputy Mayor made to the Rotary Club.
Yes. Oh, yes, that's a.
It's, I think, I know it's not in addition to the agenda, I just want to follow up because of this comment. So the unfortunate news is the Rotary Club that's existed in Port Hoxbury since nineteen sixty-one. Um, it was a change of membership and whatnot. Um, they're apparently, I understand, folding. They're they're closing their doors and yeah, it's an organization that over all those years has contributed so much to Port Hoxbury. Anyhow, going forward to our next public meeting, I I would, with the support of council, bring forward some motion to uh, uh, send a letter to the Rotary Club acknowledging uh, the contributions that they've made to the town of Port Hoxbury over all these past years.
Yeah, that's absolutely, that's a great idea. We'll definitely get Melissa to make a note of that, and that is a good point. Um, I was planning on uh, yeah, uh, focusing on that for one of the acknowledgements, but it would be nice to have a formal conversation on our agenda.
Your worship.
Yes.
I don't know, I'm not sure what they call the head rotary, is it, is this like, what do they call the head rotary? Okay, I I don't know. But it's uh, I spoke to Patrick Langley today briefly on uh, by text and voice. And uh, I think uh, they may appreciate it coming, making a brief presentation on the their history as a service club. So uh, maybe opportunity to hear from them, which would be most appropriate. And um, it is unfortunate seeing it close. It's, I hope it's not a barometer of community health, but uh, yeah, times, different errors. It's certainly a wonderful community service group.
Absolutely. They're, we're leaving lots of their fingerprints in the room for sure, but it'd be nice to have a formalized, I guess, synopsis of that.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, that is a good point, and thank you, Council Corey, for mentioning. So we'll move on now to C A O reports. You guys have a lot to oh, and all those hefty reports over you, Derek.
Uh, yes, your worship, uh, we've um, let me scroll down. Um, we we have a number of things to report on, just as the, as uh, as counselors have reported on their on on their, on their meetings and uh, activities over, over the summer. Uh, there was a lot accomplished uh, over the summer with respect to all departments um, within, within the town. We're gonna start with finance uh, and ask uh, and ask our new Director of Finance, Brian Luciano, to give a report on on um, from the finance department.
Certainly. I don't know, protocol for me to stand or sit or?
You can sit.
Just sit right here. Okay, even better. Um, so first item on uh, the report, uh, Straight I T uh, handles the I T for five partners in the straight region. In August, uh, we held our um, annual general meeting and required some executive appointments because of some uh, movement of board members uh, to different municipalities. Uh, so under the I M A, uh, we have to appoint um, new chair every year. Uh, so Randy DeLory of uh, the C A O of Town of Aniganish uh, now holds chair. Uh, vice chair would be the C I G of Inverness County Keith McDonald. Uh, I've retained the role of secretary, which I've held since the inception of the organization. And treasurer, who uh, is a nine-voting member of the board, would be Bethany Collier at the Town of Aniganish. Also, uh, as of April first, Straight I T has hit its uh, third year in operation, uh, which means we can now open up um, uh, the option of taking on additional municipal units for uh, kind of their subsidiaries. Uh, so something like we could take on someone like, say, A D P C or a smaller uh, organization if we have the resources to do so. So the board's tasked uh, the director, uh, David Muse, to um, basically study uh, the organization to see what kind of capacity we have to take on any additional clients. Uh, anything that would be brought on would help defray costs from the current partners. Uh, as far as audit goes, this is now coming to a close. Uh, Erin had handled most of this before she left, but it's now in its final stage. Uh, we're waiting on a final actuarial point uh, report from Eckler. Uh, once that's done, uh, that'll be incorporated into the statements, and then Grant Thornton will finalize those and present to council for final approval. Um, under the water utility, uh, second quarter bills are sent out uh, at the end of July. Uh, balances came due at the end of August. Uh, and reminder notices will be sent out to uh, account holders uh, around the end of September. Uh, for tax billings, the final tax billing uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six was sent to property owners at the beginning of August. Uh, balances will come to at uh, October first. And following that, preliminary tax sale notices uh, properties with three years of arrears will be sent uh, at the end of October. Um, it's been mentioned a couple of times, but Superport Marine um, was under uh, the Company Creditors Arrangement Act, which was finalized uh, in August. Uh, so that closed the successful component of that was Cactus Ship Repair Limited. Uh, and right now, staff is working uh, with respects to an interim uh, lease agreement. Uh, with, we're continuing on a long-term agreement. And Landry Lake, uh, which has been mentioned, Landry Lake Utilities been mentioned several times around the table tonight. Uh, we continue to meet with uh, the green hydrogen developers, provincial departments, and legal advisors, as well as staff of Richmond County. That's everything I have to report.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'd ask uh, Gordy, Gordy Sucker, General Manager, so these perks.
Sure. Good evening, again, everyone, your worship. That's a brief report on uh, some of the highlights of our summer operations. Uh, is, I don't know if you got a chance to be in the arena since our race went back in, but our boards are installed. That all started by uh, having staff remove the old ones. Um, and right now they are for sale on our, uh, on the Airfans website across the province. We don't have a lot of uh, interest in them. A couple of local community groups have interest, but that's something we can probably sit on for a little bit. But uh, so staff removed the old boards. Uh, we retained the old glass, uh, which was, you know, there wasn't too much wrong with the old glass, the glass that we had. So those were both uh, cost-saving measures that allowed us to to get the new boards in. Um, what you don't see yet is uh, at the end of each, at the end of the arena, at both ends, there's gonna be swing gates that that open, that saves us uh, time and effort, you're in turnover sets, count the colors and and load in and load out. So instead of removing that with floors and removing the glass, uh, those sections are gonna open and it's gonna be uh, much more efficient to carry out air, air operations in that, on that manner. Um, so the new stuff has some options that the old stuff has, the new boards, they have a soft cap rail in the top, it's called. And that's what they, that's what you see right in the N H L breakdown. It's a, it's an absorbent piece on the top of the board. So when your body or your head or neck or shoulders hit that, there's movement to it. Excuse me, whereas in the past, there's, it was rigid, it's a rigid uh, board. So that's uh, that's one thing that we've been moving over the years to try to reduce injury. And again, another one is, is uh, at the end of the player's benches, instead of having a ninety-degree corner on glass. It's curved acrylic now, so you 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 kind of bounce around it. You don't see people whack and coming to a pretty abrupt stop into a ninety-degree piece of five-eight tempered glass. So uh, those are two grade up, uh, three grade up upgrades to our our boards. Uh, certainly beautiful. They have, we have all our new uh, boards on each, uh, marketing and and stuff on it now. It looks really nice in there. Um, guys did a great job of getting the ice back in and getting it back to arena operations. So that's where you sit now. We all, the project also included rebuilding the the wood frames underneath the player's benches, setting family box on the floor. There's two by six, uh, first we treated two by six wood there, but the puck board and the matting on top of it, but over the twenty years, it doesn't get a chance to dry very often. Uh, even in the summer, when we pick the mats up, it's, you know, it's wet. And so it's, it's a lot of rotten stuff, so. It's just, it was a matter of replacing those, those wood frames while we had the boards out and had the opportunity to do so. Uh, minimal cost and it should be good for a few years to come now. So uh, everything's back in, like you said, we're back to uh, arena events. We had one staff member retire in the, retired uh, after seven years of service. Uh, so we're gonna miss her, and I'd like to publicly thank you that we've had a little get-together for her, but uh, thank her for her service. She's uh, she was a valued member of our staff and we'll miss her in and around. She did come back to do some summer uh, grounds work for us, so we hopefully, maybe that's something that would continue. Uh, and to follow that up, Mike McIntyre has been hired after a uh, a pretty in-depth application process. Uh, we had, we had some good interest, but Mike's a local guy from town that's uh, has a great work ethic and we were happy to have him on board. He seems to be enjoying his new position and uh, moving forward with Mike. Uh, six, our six summer students wrapped up their eight weeks on uh, August twenty-second. Uh, like to thank them for their efforts. They contributed to all departments of the, of the summer, of the town operations. Great from gravel green waterfront, correct department, uh, certainly here at the Civic Center. Uh, we had a pretty productive summer and we had lots of good comments on on uh, on the town and how it was, how it looked throughout the summer. So we're happy about that. The pool skimmer replacement and return, water return jets, that that project is complete. Uh, both pools are The pool, uh, skimmer replacement and return, water return jets, that, that project is complete, uh, both pools are. The big pool is, is full and operational now, uh, the little pool is, is almost full, we'll, we'll probably have it filled by the middle of next week. Uh, pool operations are scheduled to, to start up again on October first, so we'll be ready for that. Um, it was a pretty, pretty in-depth process by, you know, we had to core grill out the old, the old skimmer. Uh, skimmers out of the concrete and, and. Reinstate, then put the new ones in and then reinstate the concrete around them, and, uh, with the return jets, we had to actually core them out also. And have them reinstalled, so it meant working on the pool surface, but also in underneath the pool with a confined space entry team. Uh, for, on the safety side of it. But that went pretty good. We did, we had a couple of setbacks on, uh, on timing of getting the equipment that we needed, but, uh. We certainly be ready for, for opening day. Uh, electrical connection conversion has been, the electrical has been relocated at the Sunset Park. And when, as Councils aware, we've discussed earlier, that we have a new tenant in the Oceans Innovation Center, uh, Spitzer. Who we know is a leader in marine operations have acquired, uh, some office space there. As well as grad space, and, uh, we're happy to have them on board. Dan Willie Field, um, had a, a really busy summer at the field, uh, really bright. If anybody, if you haven't had a chance to see the lights, uh. We may have a couple of opportunities with the high school teams finished up the, the field uses this year, so. When they come on, it's just like, it's just like daytime over there. Yeah, it's beautiful, it's just like, uh, our, our residents are so lucky.
It's still daytime in Southern Province.
Pretty much, but they did a great job in, uh, aligning them so that it's, it's really minimal impact to the houses that are there. Like even at ten, eleven o'clock at night, so you see a bright sky, but there's nothing directed towards the houses, it's really good, so. Uh, groundwork and landscaping completed on the AT trail. Uh, the Emily Field and the soccer field parking lot, we're, that, that's to be finalized and the final things to be completed, uh, probably the next month or so. Our, our paving contractor was, was busy throughout the summer with some larger jobs, uh, highway jobs and, and pay, and street jobs. So he couldn't get to that smaller job, so we looked at doing that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, same at the infield regrading, that was put off, when we couldn't complete it, same between. Our user group schedules, we put it off until the fall, until, till they finished their season, um. And the field is perfectly safe and, and usable for them to do so. We had a couple of, uh. Corners there and, and the, the senior team went on to, to the finals and, you know, runner-up in the league, so they had a good season. But that work will happen, uh, probably in the next couple of weeks, once the high school ball is finished and the field is done for the years. Um, yeah, there's still stuff left, there's some improvements to the clubhouse, um. And we have to finish the AT connection to the soccer field and reviewing areas for, for accessibility. And as Her Worship mentioned, uh. We were gonna, oh, I gotta finish up the airport there. So we did have some deficiencies at the airport, uh, with our asphalt. That's in the hands of Stantec, and we're in construction right now. They're investigating what happened and, and what's gonna take place to, to, to remedy that, that issue. Uh, we carried out some routine maintenance and inspections to our infrastructure on site. And some, uh, some regular maintenance to the, uh, equipment in there, burners and stuff, so. And, yeah, if Her Worship had mentioned that their next, uh, idea meeting will be coming in the next week or two, so, uh. That's where we ship that, and that's my report. Happy day, answering any questions.
Thank you so much, Gordy.
Um, I don't have questions, it's just, uh. And I'm sure you're aware, reminder to flush the above umbrella, so there's no recap of concerns that.
I'm sorry.
Um, reminder to flush the above head umbrella.
Yes, we have that in our, in our, uh, starting, uh, procedure now, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Your Worship, through you, through Snook, and. The deficiencies on the apron, um, any comment, elaborate on that?
I don't know a lot about the technical.
That's, that's, that's the apron that we just redid, right?
That's certainly part of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it was, it's lost to be like something that failed in the, the. Sub-straight underneath the, the asphalt and there wasn't, there wasn't as much asphalt put there as. Be- because of, there was already pretty good asphalt there, uh, so we didn't dig it out as much as we did the runway, say, in other spots. So we're not sure if that was the cause, that's for the engineers to figure out, and, yeah, so I, for me to give you. Uh, an actual cause and.
Sure, yeah.
Guessing, but, yeah, that's, that's what I'll like, that's what the, the comments I've heard were on site with people. Engineers and, and the contractors, so.
Right.
Terry can provide a little bit.
Yeah, so with all construction projects, there's some deficiencies that's created and that's what Gordy is for, so it's been. Some localized failures in that municipal, primarily on the temp, on the thermic. Uh, the process is, we, we milled off a very small amount of, of asphalt, put a very large amount on there. So the possibility of, of severe failure is not, is not, would be, would be very unusual. What, what will happen is that we have, we have the engineers from Stantec and Northern, uh, going to site in, at the end of this month. And they'll be looking at all areas of asphalt and identifying any deficiencies, and Northern Construction will come back and. Repair those deficiencies, whether it's in, uh, in the mixed design, which we know, which we've checked already. Or in another, in, in, in another, from another source, but. It's, it's a normal court, court of business, having deficiencies and correcting deficiencies.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, as you've seen, lots of work going on this summer, so lots of work in, on, from, from Gordy's side and a ton of work on, on recreation side as well. Um, there, Michelle could probably add four or five pages on, on what's occurred here too. Uh, but we have a, we have a, a, a summary of, of some of the events and. And she'll join us, uh, now and tell us about the summer.
Give some major highlights of the summer and some of the upcoming, uh, things that are coming up in the fall. Um, as you all know, you've, you've seen it, it was a very, very busy summer, um, in the, um. The Recreation Department has been, uh, uh, uber-successful summer camp as usual, um, completely full every day of the eight weeks. Uh, and I think even actually wait-listed most days, so it, it really, again, I think, I feel like we had, we said the same thing last year. Uh, and the year before, it's really speaking to the community for, uh, people to, people who are looking for, um, summertime. To opt here, so really happy to be able to provide that in a, in a really fun, intentionally programmed way. Um, uh, so just a really, um, great thing for parents and for the kids in attendance. We had a great group of, uh, of camp counselors, they just really did a phenomenal job. Um, other summer programming, um, scavenger hunts, youth fun time days, uh, walking groups, drop-in skateboarding. Um, track and field fun day, uh, uh, ever popular. We had about seventy. Uh, kids in attendance, I think it was one of the biggest ones, uh, so far, and really want to shout out to the summer staff. Uh, Corinne and the community volunteers that come out to help specifically for that event every single year. Um, so, uh, a major thank you to them. Um, of course, our Canada Day celebrations on July first, it's always hugely attended and, um. I think even by people not just from, uh, the town of Oxford, but from all over, because they know how amazing and fun it is. Uh, we had some engagements this year in our community gardens, which was great. We had, um, one individual plus, um, two groups. Um, sort of take ownership, uh, of a community garden box, so that was really nice to see. I don't think we had seen anybody. Um, use them, uh, or be looking to use them since, I think, twenty-twenty-two. So it's really nice to see people wanting to get involved in that and, you know, get that on. Um, online registration for fall programming is coming up, um, I think you have a copy of the package. The flyer in your package, um, it will be coming out online tomorrow. It will not, uh, go in a mail-out this time, that is not a service now that Canada Post. Uh, is providing, so we're looking at some other options like, um. Providing flyers to the schools for the children that take home and things like that, so.
That's good, yeah.
Uh, we're just kind of having to explore some other avenues, uh, to get the word up, but hopefully we'll have lots of on, lots of online traffic, uh, with that as well. Um, and obviously people wait, uh, chomping at the bit to get their kids registered, uh, for programs, um, and particularly for swim lessons, which is always a huge. A huge deal. Uh, the straight area pool, uh, will publicly open on October first, but usually now and then, uh, we'll be conducting some training. Uh, so bronze cross, uh, between September nineteenth to twentieth and swim instructor training, uh, as well. And registration for pool programming, uh, and aquatics, uh, opens on October second, which is, uh, a little bit after, uh. Uh, rec, our regular rec programming registration, which begins on September twenty-third. Um, public skating as usual will begin right after Thanksgiving, so those regular, um. Family skating, adult skating, after-school skates will start on the Tuesday after, uh, Thanksgiving. A quick highlight on Granville Green, uh, we had a beautiful series this year, um, weather was absolutely perfect. And we, we didn't have to come indoors once. Um, it was very well-attended and, and very successful and enjoyable. Thank you, Councilor Hart, he came on, came out to help us celebrate. Uh, Monday and, uh, a big thank you to the staff, uh, collaborating departments, uh, our summer staff. Uh, and the community for their ongoing support of the Granville Green Series. It's always, um. Something that we all look forward to here at Townport Oxbury. Uh, Sports Hall of Fame, uh, the nomination period closed for nom, uh, for nominations on, uh, the twelfth. And so the group is, uh, is meeting on Thursday to review, uh, the nominations and we hope to have an update for Council on. Uh, for the next council meeting. Where we'll announce the inductees, uh, and then the induction ceremony is November twenty-second. Um, the Cape Breton Eagles, uh, Mooseheads game, uh, on September sixth, huge success, about twelve hundred. Uh, in attendance, um, and already two new requests for arena advertisements since that game, so, um. That's, that's a really great thing, a great way to showcase, um, our arena and, um. Great way to increase our ad revenue, which is, I think, right around the forty-five thousand dollar annually right now, so. Uh, between ICE logos and arena board advertising, so it's, it's a really great way to, um, increase revenue for the arena as well. Um, the, I think it was mentioned to Council already, we do have a new operator opening the Civic Center Pantheon. They are hoping to, hoping to open on Sunday afternoon, um, for the parrot game. So looking forward to sampling the new, the new, uh, the new layers. Uh, upcoming shows, we have Ria May coming on November first, uh, November twenty-third, the Men in the Deep's Christmas, uh, show, the Full Lounge Christmas. That's Sarah Gatorian, uh, uh, Ben Maynard Show, Christmas in Cape Breton, uh, the ever-favorite, uh, ever-sold-out, um. Christmas in Cape Breton Show, uh, on November thirtieth, and then in March, we actually have Jane Rankin coming to do his own Raider Circle, so. Really looking forward to that as well. We're gearing up for quite a busy fall and, uh, winter season, uh, particularly in October. October seems to be the. Uh, super busy time with, um, Oktoberfest and Celtic Colors and Fall Team Rewards, uh, Fall and Stravaganda Market, all those. Um, huge community events that we support, um, and we also have already nine, uh, hockey tournaments. Left for the Civic Center, so it's, uh, it's gonna be a busy, um, but super fun, like I said, so, looking forward. Uh, and then marketing and media, just a quick highlight, uh, our page followers grew above two-hundred-and-fifty. From sixty-one eighty-three to sixty-three thirty-six, uh, over the summer months. That's us. And that was my report.
Thank you so much, Michelle, uh, just opened up the floor for any questions or comments. Um, I don't have any questions, but just, um, wanna commend you on your commitment through the summer. Those weekends and Sundays and that beautiful weather, showing up and, uh, being there with, with the rest of the town staff and, uh. Namely Annie, she's being mentioned for one of our. Worries, but, uh, just wanted to thank you again for.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And Sadja, we'll present our, our Engineering and Public Works Report. Another busy summer for public works, yeah.
Seems to be.
Yeah, I have been long listening to that.
We can do, we can, we can summarize this.
Yeah, I can, uh. I will stand with the public works for building, uh, the public works building is now in minor stages. Prior construction has targeted at substantial completion for the September time deals. Uh, we only have like, uh, minor activities remaining, like finalization of electric, uh, HVAC finishes. Propane and plumbing actions, painting, touch-ups and final concern, uh, and inspection. Hmm. I have skipped over waters, some upgrades, uh, the pit field water tank and oil tanker buildings were completed on August fifteenth. The tank is currently in process of filling disinfectioner and water quality testing. Once commissioned, it will city completely load to a capacity and resilience for towns over the system. Uh, currently we took, uh, bacteria samples yesterday and we are expecting results tomorrow. So hopefully we will start filling the tank by this weekend itself. Uh, moving on to camera trail active transportation project. The AT trail have completed on June twenty-fourth, uh, with deficiencies adjusted by August fifth. This project has badly improved surface quality and accessibility for trail users. As a final step, installation of bolters to prevent another raceway access. Uh, we are planning to install those, uh, by next week. Uh, and that can be considered as, uh, a fully completion for the project. And, uh, we had a. Good opportunity to, uh, have NCL for the capital paving project this year. So, uh, the project was awarded to Northern Contract Limited, a visit, and what took place from. July seven through July tenth. A resurfacing, a total area of six thousand thirty-three square meters of asphalt was done. Streets completed under the spoiled pair, five hundred drives, Maxine Street. It's straight near our civic center. Maclean Court, uh, McQuarrie Drive Extension, Hidden Street, Bay Street and Bay Street. All work was delivered on schedule with the proper traffic control in place and within the approved twenty-twenty-five budget. Of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Pine Ridge Drive sidewalk project, currently it's an active project. So the project was awarded to Dexter Construction and began in construction on August nineteen. Uh, working the installation of new concrete sidewalk, curves, driver inspiration, crosswalks with tactile degrees and grading. Activities. The substantial foundation is expected by the, uh, end of September, this month, uh, with a permitting. Public work activity, uh. Our crew have been busy toward the community during the month of, uh, June to September. Uh, they had, uh, worked on four for patching, like for repairs. Sidewalk updates on, uh, several streets including Bernard, Philport and Pitt Street. Stones, sea otting and flushing activities have been carried out, few gas stations were rectified and, uh. Adjusted relocation of fire hydrants were done. Replacement and upgrades to old and faded traffic signage and the street name boards to new town displays were done. Refreshing familiar markings, crosswalks. Parks and grounds upkeep, including Community Park and Oakley Baseball Field. Protein Street and facilities made in service have been done. Moving on to department initiatives. This summer, the town advanced its application to federal issue of Canadian municipalities' climate adaptation program. With the support of Magalister and Creek, uh, the submission included a full package of assessment tools. And the council resolution, a draft has been, uh, forwarded to council, I believe, uh. It should be with, uh, Mr. Terry. And, uh, in kinds, uh, contribution letters and the detailed project work has already been submitted to FCM portal. If approved, this will position the town to secure federal funding, build the local capacity and strengthen our long-term climate resilience plan. Hmm. Landville Street, uh, guardrail replacement, uh, on August fourth, forty-three meters of guardrail. Were, uh, replaced at the Landville Street and industrial park road junction. This work carried out by Eastern Considerate has improved our basic and, uh, replaced energy management structure. Hmm, and a, a short update on fleet upgrades, uh, the tandem procurement is being processed, uh. proceeding on schedule. Uh, the new F three fifty fleet vehicle is expected to be delivered by the end of September or early October. And we have an entry removal on Pitt Street, Council Hart mentioned about some um, assets regarding some dead trees over there. So we called in an arborist. He did his inspection and added five two that is and a few others, perhaps Manchester near one one zero and one two Pitt Street. AMD landscaping was assigned for the task and they removed the trees and trimmed the area on August twentieth to hundred safety numbers. Uh, rail safety, uh, in partnership with Cape Breton and the Centre for Social Mobility, the town is supporting installation of Luke Listen Lady. Rail safety defers at Maxwell Street Railway Crossing. This work is scheduled to uh, take place tomorrow. And I believe Council and Mayor has been invited for a proposition by London Park. This initiative is a part of National Rail Safety Campaign, a little bit at North Coast to Bada. Crosswalk flag pilot program on June twenty-sixth, public works install the pilot flag stationed on Reeves Street near uh, Marryville Road. This uh, project was initiated by students of Seir Camp supported by the council. The brightly colored flags have been grew pedestrian stability and crossing. The town will monitor feedback and consideration to expand these further sites as well. And that's all.
Thank you so much, Sajin. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sure. Well, not so much a question, but comment. Thank you for your report. Um, I just wanna point out that the instruction on our capital paving ran from the seventh until the tenth. Yeah. And that's not an indication that we didn't do much. It's an indication how efficient that company was because we did get a lot of paving done.
Actually, at that time, uh, there must have been happening.
Right.
And so the contractor had a bunch of crew left with him. So everybody rushed to our town and they finished.
Oh, yes, they were, they were.
Out to the center.
They were flat out for the, and just the other comment is on here, we have line painting and crosswalk maintenance. Not sure that there is this ragly line, yellow line, McCory Drive uh, to the asphalt on Pine Ridge.
We we got rid of that already.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We repaved the whole street.
No, no, but that line is still there, isn't it?
No, line is gone. So we need to repave that, repaint that. So.
Yes, that's what I mean. It needs to be repainted. Yes, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just one small addition, uh, so the Sajin, uh, referred to climate risk assessment application. So we need a resolution of council, uh, to to go to go forward. So we'll be sending information on that and be asking for consideration of council for a resolution to support that project. Right. At our, at our, at our public meeting in October.
And that fits with the timeline for their deadlines?
It does. So we indicated that on the application, uh, that the resolution will be forwarded after the first, the public meeting.
Great, that sounds great. Okay, well, thank you to all the staff of your reports. Uh, we are going to move on to other business. Um, so uh, these two items should take a tremendous amount of time. Uh, the first item is around the Austin Letcher Memorial. Um, so just to bring council, this council up to speed a little bit on Austin Letcher. So he was conservation officer, uh, or provincial game warden. Uh, and he was, uh, actually the, his, his family has a has deep roots in the town of Britsbury and many of his family are still, still residing in Britsbury today. Uh, he served in Inverness County from nineteen forty-seven uh, to nineteen sixty-seven. At that point had lost his life in the line of duty. Uh, and if you wanna flip to the next page, Melissa, and this is just um, a little bit of more information about Austin Letcher. So in nineteen forty-five, Austin Letcher was hired as a game warden for Inverness County by Alistair Fraser, the first provincially employed forester on Cape Breton Island. And when Alistair was asked about the early days of the department and his warden's Austin Letcher stood out and his, his, um, quote is, Letcher was one of the best in the province, adding, as far as we know, Austin Letcher was the first game warden in Nova Scotia to use parachute flares for wildlife law enforcement. So in initiative at the time, the flares were very effective for lighting up fields to locate poachers. So he certainly was ahead of of his time in the work that he did in Inverness County. The next slide. Um, so Stephen Long, uh, presented to council that it would have been the most previous council in June twenty twenty-three, requesting that town consider a plan to honor the memory of Austin Letcher. So Council of Pori would have been a part of many of these discussions. Uh, and the current recognition, uh, today, uh, for Austin Letcher is a monument for fallen conservation officers in Shuban Academy Park. And he's also acknowledged in the Conservation Officer Honorable Provincial Website. And thirdly, he's also acknowledged as a Canadian Police and Peacekeepers Memorial in Ottawa. Um, so, um, part of the request was for us to figure out a way to acknowledge Austin Letcher in his hometown in Britsbury, uh, and overall in Inverness County. Um, so there will be a monument and a dedication uh, that will honor uh, the life and the memory of Austin Letcher. It will be installed at the trailhead in, um, and I guess it would be, uh, in the Grants Pond Trailhead and there will be a ceremony on October eighteenth. Uh, I believe it starts at eleven AM, Melissa. And, um, certainly all of council are more than welcome to participate in the unveiling of that, of that monument. Um, certainly, um, a lot, many of the, uh, Austin Letcher's, uh, family members, uh, including, uh, I believe some, some, I guess, I don't know if it would be, it would be, uh, living. This would be not sure. I think they, they fond of, of Stephen Long. Uh, and anyway, the family is very, very um, excited for the unveiling. So, you know, we, we will, uh, be releasing a press release to force invite the community uh, to participate. And, uh, later in the week, uh, we'll also be inviting Emily McPory as well as, uh, uh, Warden Bonnie, uh, the Kaiser to, to come and participate as well. And, and I also want to thank, uh, Melissa and Gordy as well. They were, uh, pretty crucial in, in helping organize, uh, and everything from the monument, the monument design, who's helping to organize the event and everything in between. So certainly I wanted to give a little bit of a presentation so that, uh, you were all, I guess, kind of brought, uh, up to speed in terms of, um, the past trajectory of how this, this, uh, project uh, reached fruition and hopefully we will see you all on, uh, October eighteenth. And any questions?
Yes, Your Worship.
Yes.
So, um, so it, it, it's gonna be a plaque that's affixed to a, a large holder? Is that what it is?
Yeah, Terry, did you wanna give a little more information on it? Or is that a line?
Let us go. Gordy's been directly involved. You know, I have some information, but Gordy's here and you're gonna get the best information. So it's, it's a, it's a marble base that was erected and put together by Arsenal Monuments in, in English. And there will be a plaque on it with an inscription, uh, that the family has, has come forward with and also a picture of Mr. Letcher will go above the plaque. But it's quite large. It's, it's sixty inches wide. It's twenty-four inches deep and it's about forty-two inches high. So it's a, it's a nice, you know, it will be, it'll be able to be seen and it's going down between the trees. Um, I guess if the fountain, you know, just down by the fountain, in your north, there's a couple of substantial trees there and we can set it in between the trees and it'll fit into the mangue and nuts there. So the base is prepared. We, we expect to whatever, uh, arsenal schedule is this week, they're supposed to drop it into place and, you know, Steve wants to be there and we do it and and offwind and all and stuff. So it may be in place to split itself.
Yeah.
We'll do the unveiling at October.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gordy.
You're welcome.
About any other questions or comments? Well, that's great. Okay, and the second item of her other business is with regard to Remembrance Day. Uh, and if you don't mind, if you don't mind, let's move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we had discussed, uh, a Remembrance Day themed, uh, crosswalk, uh, that, um, you know, obviously would, would honor um, our veterans here in town and within the straight area. Uh, so this is a bit of a rendering based on some conversations I was able to have uh, with the, the members of the Legion Executive over the summer. Um, so the, the idea would be to have "Let's We Forget" on each approach, uh, to, uh, the cross, the crosswalk. Um, and the crosswalk will have white and red hatchmarks and then a corresponding sign. So this is just a, a draft. Um, so before we kind of bring, uh, something like a rendering forward to the Legion, we definitely wanted to make sure the council was, I guess, you know, uh, in agreement with, at least tentatively with, uh, the plan for the crosswalk. And the, uh, proposed location of the crosswalk will be, uh, to connect, uh, both sides of the sidewalk on, on Maxwell Street, uh, that will lead people safely, uh, to, to the park. Um, and I don't know, Terry, if you wanted to add anything more to that?
Uh, no, I think that, that's, um, with, with approval, we'll move forward with the, um, with the painting of the crosswalk when, um, when it's appropriate prior, which prior to November eleventh. Um, with respect to traffic control. So the other issue is traffic control.
Yes.
Uh, we've been, we've had a number of conversations with the, with Regional Traffic Authority. Uh, we've been working, uh, from the, from our correspondence to the minister. Uh, we've been working very closely with, with our local manager. The local manager has been working with Traffic Authority as well. Uh, and we're in the process of putting in an application for, for traffic control uh, to inhibit the movement of traffic for a period of at least twenty minutes. Uh, during that, that period of time, which will be, um, the, the a good part of the, of the ceremony. Um, I think there's, there'll be conversations around a, um, change in the ceremony as well, uh, to, to make the best use of that, of that, uh, that amount of time. So that's moving forward and we should have an update on that shortly.
Yeah, and, and just to also to add to, to Terry's comments, um, we were able to have some, some great conversations with, uh, with the Legion with regard to, um, being able to accommodate that twenty minute window. So we'll continue to have conversations with them and to continue to talk, you know, with Scotia Public Works. Um, with the, ultimately with the goal, uh, to not have traffic interrupting the ceremony, which, um, has been uh, something that, uh, many people have asked for after every ceremony, when there's multiple jailbreak incidents as well as, um, you know, vehicles being very disruptive, especially during the moment of science. So we're hoping to seek a remedy to a longstanding issue. I'm sure each and every one of us has, has heard that after every single ceremony. So fingers crossed, we're gonna continue to work towards a solution and, uh, you know, certainly appreciate, um, everyone's ongoing feedback on uh, both the crosswalk and, uh, being able to, to manage the traffic issue. And, uh, Deputy Mayor, did you?
Oh, Your Worship. To staff, uh, appreciate the efforts in that, that there was a motion in council back in November, one of the first ones from this council, which, uh, stemmed from, uh, correspondence received by citizens who elegantly outlined the, uh, traffic issue. Ultimately, we know that the decision for moving on that street is within the province. We heard, heard our citizens, we're working with the province and let's hope that they, uh, listen to us.
Absolutely. And Gordy, did you?
Yes, Your Worship. So for the, our annual Christmas parade, is this the same process that we go through to get the street closed for that parade?
Similar process.
Same way.
And is it, and is it a time limit of twenty minutes as well?
So the time, we, we wanna maximize the, the amount of time. So we're in discussions around that, but
Yeah.
we feel confident there could be a, a twenty, a fifteen to twenty minute, relatively confident that we can get, that you get that, uh, time when all traffic on the highway stops. Um, uh, for that, for that period of time.
Anyhow, I think that's, it's, it's really positive and I guess it's a start. Like we'll, we'll see how that works out with, with this year. I'm thinking, and I might be wrong or incorrect, that the Christmas parade, when it hits the Reeve Street, probably takes more than fifteen minutes for it to make the turn at the Reynolds and Reeves down to the Old Sixty Road. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, it's important. It actually happens maybe two different things.
Pardon me?
I'm not, uh.
What's that?
That there's, uh, that sometimes the, the, uh, approval and what actually occurs can be, you know, there can be some flexibility within that.
Right.
And that's what, that's what occurred during the Christmas parade.
I, I know I had a hard time keeping up with the Grinch and the parade. So then sadly did, it felt like the whole thing was like over and done within that, like fifteen to twenty minute on the Reeve Street side. But you know, I certainly wasn't timing it. I wouldn't have the breath to like run it. Um, so I guess what I'm hoping to get from council this evening is if this, this is, of course, it is a, a draft and um, Terry, as a traffic engineer, would have to maybe, you know, um, maybe edit this a tiny little bit in terms of like the length of the, the crossing and the lettering. But tentatively, this is, this is roughly what it will look like. So if council is okay with the idea of, I guess, the draft of what the sidewalk can look like with, uh, the sign, uh, and you, and I do have some consensus, I'd be happy to take this forward to the Legion, just for them to have a final look, just to make sure that that communication we had over the summer is translated, uh, into this rendering and um, if all goes well, hopefully we'll have this installed and ready, well, in advance of the Remembrance Day.
So Your Worship, at this point, the Legion is satisfied with this design, is it?
So this, this design had to come before council for you.
Sure, yeah.
But this is based on the conversation that we had with them over the summer.
Yeah.
So if, if I was hearing what they were saying correctly, uh, I just wanted to double check to make sure of that.
Yeah.
That, that conversation and the rendering roughly is, has, I wanna make sure I'm checking out all the boxes in terms of the, the conversations that we have. But if, if council is okay with what you see, then, uh, knowing that there could be a little bit of tweaking, uh, we will take that forward to, to, uh, the Legion.
Your Worship, uh, what I see, I'm satisfied if it satisfies, uh, the executive or the new executive of Brand Forty-three.
Sure.
And, uh, ultimately, uh, none of it command.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay. Yeah, very good. Thank you very much. And that concludes the Remembrance Day conversation. And of course, um, Terry and I will keep everybody, uh, prized as we continue to make progress on the traffic side of things. Uh, future meetings, we have our, which one? Oh, apologies. We have a Curling Club letter request. Terry, if you wanna?
Yes, Your Worship, one addition. And so we have, we have a letter from, that you received in your package or you received in your package. Um, with respect to, uh, the question, the Curling Club. Um, Curling Club has been so, has been asked by Celtic Colors to host a concert in, uh, in the Saracens Auditorium during Celtic Colors. Um, they are trying to, um, they're, they're putting their volunteer Um they are trying to, um they're, they're putting their volunteer hours together to be able to host this, this event. They're trying to get a, a maximize the amount of money they can, they can, uh they can bring in. Um for, for this not-for-profit uh um club. And they're asking for a reduction in the, in the rent uh for Saracot Auditorium. Uh staff is, is uh recommending uh a reduction of three hundred dollars. Um and that will, uh that the remaining three hundred dollars will cover any expenses that the town will incur as a result of the movement.
So is, uh once the wishes of council are, are we okay with moving a formal motion to that regard forward to where this public meeting?
I would, I support that, your worship.
No, no opposition to that? So we do have consensus, so we will move that. The council's in agreeing on a, a, a motion forward. Now, future meetings. Uh so we have our public meeting um the first Tuesday of October on the seventh. Followed by committee of the whole, October twenty-first on the third uh Tuesday of the month and. Motion of adjournment.
Hello, reader.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, thanks.